We're going to get ourselves ready. Dear Father in heaven, we come before there this time in Thanksgiving for all that's all that's all given us and we're indeed very grateful to live in this very special community with very special people and we are grateful Father to be able to serve as council and to be able to search solutions to problems and we pray Father that we may be able to do so with respect and in with thee as always and pray Father that I may bless those who are unwell in our communities and in surrounding communities also and would say this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
All right. I think we're pretty well on time. So we are going to have a council meeting this thirteenth day of October and we recognize the media. We have Mr. Bill Hill for Temple City Star and we have Mr. Corey Macalusi for Channel 32 and thank you so much for your services to our community and we like to recognize in our gallery our sergeant, Sergeant Wright. Thank you so much for being here. We are calling this meeting to order and are there any additions to the agenda? So we need a motion to adopt, Counselor Brown made a motion to-
I make a motion to adopt the agenda of the thirteenth day of October 2020.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Thank you. So we have our delegation. We will ask Sergeant Wright to come to the podium and help us with the quarterly report and thank you for coming and it's always an honor and a pleasure to have you here. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Mayor, counsel. So I trust everybody's got a copy of the latest third quarter stats here. Everyone's got that in front of them. And just before we begin, just an order that I need to address with the upcoming, and I have talked with Jeff here previously, and I just need to confirm at the UMR?
RMA.
RMA. I'm going to get this straight one of these times. Is there any outstanding issues or questions that we need brought up? Like are you going to be requesting a meeting with the commanding officer, the business management team on our side? So typically you'd request a meeting with them if you had any pressing issues that would revolve around provincial funding, you know, larger scale projects, things like that. Like is there any issues like that that need to be addressed?
Well, the only issue that we truly have is the way we absolutely do not like the new expenses that will come away-
The funding models have changed.
For every municipality under 5,000, we're not the only one. The formula is extremely painful to small communities.
Right.
And if the sergeant could start to hear us all and understand that there is a balancing act that needs to be had in a time where finances are a difficult issue for all.
Yeah.
Transfers from the province are being lowered in the future, but the tax requisition for policing for small municipalities is going up and incrementally up over the next three years to a point where small towns are going to find it tough to pass it on to the taxpayer.
Yeah, absolutely. And I don't think, we're obviously not unique in that and I don't think that's a unique position. I think that's a position shared by many municipalities and small communities right now. Whether or not that would be addressed at this meeting at that level, it's likely something because those funding models are all based on conversations between the federal provincial governments, right, and our top end, but I'm not sure. I can certainly check on that to see if maybe that's something that you wanted to address or just have that opinion shared and we can go from there and I can get back to you as to whether or not that's something they're going to entertain at this time.
You see, the question along with that, with that funding, is that they're saying there will be more boots on the ground, but in a municipality like ours, I doubt that that will materialize to such.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything come down like right to the local level where they're saying as a direct result of the funding increase that we're going to see additional positions.
Right.
There's nothing I've seen or read that indicates that that's happening anytime soon. If it's a long range plan, then it could be something I'm just not aware of yet or the district's not aware of yet.
Right.
But again, those are certainly, you know, questions that we can ask and push higher and just see, you know, with that increased bill or the increased spending on the community's part, what are we, what's actually going to materialize?
Right. What's for you in there?
Say again?
What is for you as a detachment in there when you're going to be asked to do more on the rural side?
I think, and again, I'll go back and double check some of this, but typically where we benefit as a small community will be district resources, like more resources we can call in at a time of need if we need something, like the crime reduction units and things like that. Whether, you know, translates into two more bodies on the ground here, like I said, I highly doubt, but again, that's something I'll have to check.
Right. Well, if you can be our advocate, that's all what we can ask for.
Perfect. I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
So with, just to, so now that I've addressed that, with the stats here, you notice some things have gone up, some things have gone down, some things have remained exactly the same. What we are seeing an increase in right now is, you know, just people lodged in cells, people were charging with offenses and whatnot. That's not necessarily to say that we're seeing more people commit offenses that need to be lodged in cells. We're just out there refining more people. We're being more proactive about the work we're doing. So there are times you'll see, like during the summer, you're going to see a bit of a dip in some of those stats. We're short resources, we're pressed for resources, you know, we're being pulled in multiple directions, there's large scale investigations going on, you know, COVID certainly had an issue to play in there as well, but so what, I guess, on those stats, what we want to remain consistent or what we want to rise are the clearance rates and that's kind of something we touched on last time, right? The amount of calls that are coming in and that we're able to solve and the amount of crime that's coming in that we're being, you know, proactively finding and looking for as opposed to just being completely reactive, right? So with that, I'm not going to go through, I won't go through all these stats if you have them in front of you, but is there any glaring questions as to numbers going up or down or?
Can I just have Counselor-
I was just looking at the provincial traffic. It's increased by a third over the quarter from 314 to 447.
And that's good.
I guess, what are they focusing on?
So different traffic initiatives. It can be anything, you know, during the summer months, we might look at distracted driving, aggressive driving, speeding and things like that. And that's typically what we want to see. We want to see guys out on the road, you know, enforcing the Traffic Safety Act, right? Like, you know, summer, we get a lot of high flyers out on Highway 5 and into the park, down to the border and whatnot. So we want guys out there, you know, being proactive and writing those tickets and slowing people down.
So that would be the Carson County where you're part of that. The town of Carson's 447 provincial statutes traffic.
No, we don't want people speeding through town. We don't want them, you know, in the school zones, you know, running the crosswalks and things like that.
Yeah.
And there's a time for education and there's a time for enforcement, right? So, you know, especially with our school zones and whatnot, you know, we had that month in September where we're stopping people and educating them and reminding them, you know, school's back in session. It had been six months, right? You know, so some of that was, you know, fair enough, but, you know, you can only warn people so long and, you know, you got to start enforcing some of those statutes provincially, right, to make sure that people aren't being hit in the crosswalks and whatnot. So, yeah, so you'll see a rise in that and that'll likely continue for the next month or two.
Does that work out about one ticket about every eight cars in town? Is that what we're-
I haven't figured out the average. Yeah. Right? Like we want to enforce good driving habits and unfortunately some of that, like I said, you know, there's a time for education and there's a time for enforcement, but-
Jeff, you want to-
There's a little confusion in the category. This is, the 447 is provincial statutes minus traffic.
Yeah, so it's not traffic.
Everything else. So the next one down, although by percentage it's up as much, Counselor Cork, from 50 to 87 is provincial traffic.
Yeah. Counselor Barnes?
Yeah, I was going to ask Sergeant, in your experience in other communities where they may have had speed bumps on some of the busy roads leading into the school areas, have you found that that helped to reduce those incidences of speeding?
Yeah, absolutely. It slows people down, you know, especially it, you know, you don't want to play on too many stereotypes, right, but you get a lot of the low riding fast cars, things like that, you know, the kids have spent a lot of money on them and they want to go fast and they want to walk on the gas now and then and typically they want to do it, you know, where there's an audience, right, which is typically a school zone. And they don't want to do that over massive speed bumps, right? You've got ground effects and whatever flying off under the car and, you know, when they hit those things. So, yeah, they're certainly a deterrent. We've had lots of discussions. Typically, the biggest adversity to that is, well, what do we do when, you know, it starts to snow? We can't plow the snow with speed bumps all over the road. And the National Park system uses these throughout and they're temporary speed bumps. They're seasonal speed bumps and when they need to remove them in the winter, they just go and bolt them from the road and they store them away till, you know, next season when the roads are cleared and they bolt them back down.
Interesting.
The reason I ask that question, Mayor, I've had several phone calls and I've had visits to my office and people up on the East Hill where you're going up the hill to school and coming down the hill on both sides on, on Third and Fourth Avenues there. It's like a racetrack going there. I mean, it's supposed to be 30K coming down, but soon as they hit that hill, it's like a, woo, we're getting adrenaline rush, let's see how we can go down there, right? And so, and I see kids all the time and lately, I mean, there's a lot of kids up there in the East Hill that are skateboarders and boy, I'll tell you, that hillside, I'm just waiting for the first kid to land on his head and have some, you know, real bad backs and I'm seeing it all the time, you know, because I lived right down there and I never noticed it before. Now that I live at the base of the hill, I'm seeing it all the time and I'm just wondering what can we do to slow that drive it down?
We did have a group, everything was about five or six that were, you know, consistently every day after school, right? It was jump on the long boards and write down the fresh pavement over the junior high and, and we have talked to them, you know, just letting them know what the danger is here and, you know, that they could actually be ticketed, not that we're keen on ticketing kids or anything like that, but just letting them know like here's the full, you know, 360 degree view of this, what could happen and, you know, what the consequences are. So I haven't seen the same group doing it, but, you know, I'm sure there's other groups out there that we're going to have to speak with as well and just let them know that, you know, not, it's not appropriate and, you know, the consequence and risk can be quite high if they're struck by a vehicle or, you know, run the intersection or fall off the board, right? So I don't think, I can't, I don't think one kid was wearing a helmet, but, so again, it's an issue, you know.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much then and if you can bring back our concern.
Yeah, I certainly will bring that up. I'll forward it up tomorrow and if that is something, I mean, again, all the meetings are virtual this year and I think they've set aside, I want to say October 28th and maybe 29th is when they will do those meetings with the senior management team and the commanding officer of the division.
One other comment, Mayor.
Go ahead, Counselor Barnes.
You might want to bring up that Minister Madu made quite a strong statement yesterday. Yesterday, there was a statement that they're really seriously looking into a provincial police force and they were saying, and I was surprised, he was very candid and said, "We might have a provincial police force and ask the RCMP to leave the province altogether." And I thought that was a little scary to think about that.
It's all part of contract renewal, right? I think we go through this every, you know, 10, 15 years.
It is, absolutely. But I also know what some of the provincial sheriffs are like too. I mean, they're very aggressive too. So there's a balance there, but, you know, I mean-
There is and the province is currently doing a feasibility study for that and that'll be a bit of a, like a process and obviously we're going to participate that, in that to some extent and, you know, the province will take, you know, the findings of that study out and I can't remember the name of the company that's been awarded the contract to do this feasibility study, but, yeah, I mean, it's all part of, you know, regular contract negotiations and I think we're mid-year, or midway through a 20-year or 30-year right now with the province. So, yeah, that's, it happens, right?
Well, thank you very much and thank you to your detachment.
Okay, thank you very much.
You so much. Bye. All right, we're going to go to five adoptions of minutes. We have the minutes of September the 8th that need to be adopted. Counselor Silk?
I'll move adoption of the regular meeting counts of council minutes from September the 8th.
Thank you very much. Any questions? I feel they reflect what we discussed. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so let's go to six bylaw and policy. We have some recommendation from CC double U that need to be put into motions. So you have the list. Where do you want to get going with them? Counselor Bangle?
I'll make a motion to recommend administration to write the letter of support for the Carriage House Theater in their bid for the CIP grant.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, Counselor Silk?
I'll move to adopt the letter written by administration in support of the City of Lethbridge regarding EMS dispatch changes.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Who can give me the third one?
That's it for them? That was it, isn't it?
That's it.
I'm reading the wrong portion there. Sorry about that. Okay. We have resolutions from 2020 planning session. That's what I was looking at. So there are quite a few there, so we need to kind of go through them one by one. There's nine of them. So, yes, Jeff?
Let me preface once again that this is our interpretation of your discussion around the table. If you want them amended in any way, they're not set in stone yet because you haven't passed them. So if we didn't quite get the intent, please correct it here.
All right, so the first motion speaks to direct administration to arrange a special council meeting focused on relationship and cooperation with a blood tribe. So delegation to include representatives from various blood tribe department and elected officials. So that will not be able to happen right away since I have an election and we still do not know the date of that election. I do not believe that it has been published yet.
The election?
But I think in principle that could be, could be something that administration can get organized doing for us. Counselor Drew?
Just make a motion to direct administration to arrange a special council meeting focused on relationships and cooperation with the blood tribe?
Okay, thank you. All right. The second one has to do with, all in question, all in favor? Thank you. Yeah, don't let me do that. I really messed up last time. Sorry. The second one has to do with a motion to direct administration to solicit public input on questions for the proposed Q and A, Counselor Brown, with the RCMP sergeant.
So I make a motion to direct administration to solicit public input or questions for the proposed Q and A session between the mayor and the RCMP sergeant.
Thank you. All in favor? Jeff, just on this item, has it been put as something on the website yet?
No, there was no resolution to do it until right now, so we'll start right away.
All right, so that will happen? Okay, thank you. So the third one has to do with a motion to direct administration to arrange and record a Q and A session and distribute it to the public so regarding-
I'll make that motion. I'm assuming we're talking about your Q and A session with the mayor and the sergeant.
Yeah.
So I'd make a motion to direct administration to arrange and record a Q and A session, distribute it to the public in the normal ways that we usually do.
Okay, all right. All in favor? Thank you very much. So the fourth one is a motion to direct administration to create and distribute an information brochure for businesses regarding rights and obligation of business owners with respect to issues related to vagrancy. Counselor Barnes?
I move to direct administration to create and distribute an information brochure for businesses regarding the rights and obligation of business owners with respect to issues related to vagrancy.
Okay, all in favor?
I have a question, sorry.
Question? Go ahead, Counselor Brown.
So I just was wondering with this one, how is this brochure any different than the other brochure that we did that you had handed out to all of the businesses?
We're going to go through that and see. So that was done by Malcolm a few years back anyway.
About three years back.
Three years back? You were on council?
I was on council, so.
Okay. So we're going to refresh that, talk with the sergeant. So we have a new sergeant, we've got a few, a new peace officer, so we're going to have them go through it and see if we can change that.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a waste of years.
We're not going to start from scratch.
Okay.
We're going to use that and tweak, yeah.
Because I'm like, why reinvent the wheel?
No, we're not.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, Counselor Brown. All in favor? Thank you. Five, motion to direct administration to arrange for counselors to attend foot patrols with members of the RCMP and all the peace officer. So that will then become something that administration will pursue once we pass the motion. Counselor Brown?
Do I really need to say it again after the mayor just said the exact same thing? Like I feel like we're doubling-
You are being quite repetitive, yeah.
I feel like we're doubling up on this.
Well, it's quite, it's up to you, Counselor. It's just to make sure the public knows what's going on.
Yeah, I just, could I not just ditto what the mayor said?
Make a motion of what the mayor said.
I make a motion with what the mayor just said.
Or she can let one of them-
Okay, so I'm going to let you read it yourself. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, six. So somebody will have to read it, so I won't speak. Okay, Counselor Barnes?
I move to direct administration to engage EBA engineering to continue assessment and provide an opinion on the repair of hole 16, including the estimated cost of the repair.
Okay, so the repair, if I remember, Jeff, had to do with consolidating the sloughing portion of the hill.
Yeah. So the reason, I want to be clear too, the reason we identified the engineering firm in here is they've already done, they've done some assessment of the stability of the hill, so we don't have to start from scratch with data. So they have cores of the hill, they have pins located in the hill that they can monitor movement, so I wasn't looking to start over again.
Safe cost.
Yeah, it should be a quick update to the previous report, I would hope. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much.
I'll move number seven.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Move to direct administration to include up to $1.5 million of capital spending for the proposed golf course clubhouse replacement and the proposed indoor recreation facility in the 2021 budget.
Okay. I have a question. Can I voice a question?
You're going to ask yourself the question?
I'll have to ask the mayor.
You can allow questions, Mayor?
So my question is maybe a clarification. What does a 1.5 million represent? Is that the cost, maximum cost, cap cost for the total facilities? In my mind, that's what it was.
That's what I-
That's my understanding.
So is that our understanding and interpretation of that? Yes?
My understanding on any contract, it's not always exact, there's always a bit of a plus or a minus and so that was one of my concerns, to say that you're going to cap it right at that. I think there should be maybe a little bit of a plus or minus, 5 or 10%. I don't know. What's your experience, Jeff?
Your motion is just for us to put that in the budget. You'll approve the final dollar when the time comes, no question.
Okay. So, but in principle, what we understood is we wanted to spend a maximum of-
Yeah.
That is it, but that's a maximum for the project itself, so-
Was it two items?
For the two item.
That was my understanding.
All right.
Because obviously over, above that could, things like donations.
No, but this is, this is-
The town itself, I understand that.
Okay, so this is what I need to clarify. Are the donation coming against that $1.5 million? Because then we're no longer talking a $1.5 million when we want to try to figure out what the cost is ultimately then of those project when it come to the operation, that is a different ballgame. If we have $1.5 million, we have a sense of what it represents in term of operation and we have a sense of what it will represent in term of tax burden. If you start to add the donation, you can now maybe talk 2.5, $3 million. Now you have operation that represent a very different story because now you're no longer stuck to this size building. Now you are increasing and you are doing something that might increase the tax burden. So that is why I want a clarification on that item. Counselor Cork, Counselor Brown?
What I see it is that 1.5 million is the maximum the town is going to donate for the capital project. Now, anything else that goes inside that building, it wouldn't necessarily increase the footprint of that building, it might increase the usability of that building. Nets, for example, for golf or whatever you wanted to talk about there. So I don't know how we can just say 1.5 if there's, if somebody wants to donate $200,000. I'm not seeing that the town take that out of their 1.5, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, all right. So, so you use a word that is interesting here. You say the footprint. So maybe could we say that that $1.5 million represent a footprint that is not going to change? That whatever you have inside the shells, different story.
I would let these two discuss that better than I have because they've been dealing with it.
Because I think it's very important because at the end, we're talking a different story if we expand those building to no end or if we keep it to what square footage is now presented.
Let me throw Counselor Brown under the bus. Okay, Counselor Brown?
Okay, Counselor Brown, go ahead.
Did you need to add?
No, I'm just-
You're just throwing me. Okay. So if I just, if I can just understand, I think this is saying, I think we're speaking the same language, but I just want to confirm because it says, it says of proposed, right? So to me, the proposed, so it was my understanding, which is Mayor, what you said, was that in between our two facilities, $1.5 million was the maximum amount of money that the town would put forward for both of these proposed facilities was my understanding. And it's also my understanding that like Counselor Cork said, that if we can get another million dollars from somewhere else, that doesn't take away our $1 million that the town was going to put in, it would add to it. But doesn't, even if they were to change the footprint, no matter what you say here, could they come back to council and say, "We've got an extra million dollars"? Is there a chance? Like, doesn't everything have to come back to council? So is it really, do we really need to tweak any more of this? Doesn't council have the final say on everything?
I would hope so.
You know what I mean? Like-
I would hope so.
Right? So I don't understand why, what the problem with this is then.
Well, the problem is as follows. If you have a 12,000 square foot for 1 point, whatever that is.
Right.
1.154.
Right.
I don't want at the end of the day to have that changed again to a $3 million just because there's money that showed up.
But if-
And just, just let me finish.
Yep.
Because it says 12,000 square foot, we have about a sense of what it's going to take for operation to cover that capital investment. If it becomes a $3 million and becomes a facility that is so much bigger, we will have the cash money for the capital, no problem there. Where we will struggle then is a facility that big will represent a different amount of a- of operational expense, yearly expense, just because of the sheer size of it, the need of more utilities, et cetera. So that's what it is. So my point of view is, we need to be extremely careful, I'm grateful for any donations, but at the end of the day, there is a certain amount of tax burden that is possible, and that doesn't mean that I don't support the, the project, not at all, it's not at all that, but I will err on the side of caution when it come to burden for the taxpayer. And I think the taxpayer will appreciate that. Somebody needs to speak for them. Yes, councillor Selk?
Okay, since I'm the one who made this motion, I'm going to tell you what my intent was.
Okay.
And that wasn't to frame it so rigid that we never, ever, ever, ever go beyond 1.1 million, and that we never, ever, ever consider that if we had some generous benefactors who may want to donate, and if they also wanna donate to an ongoing trust fund that will look after some of the operation, we're not gonna go, "Nope, it's only 1.1 million, that's it, sorry".
Okay, no, I appreciate that. I would like to know how the rest of you feel. Councillor Barnes?
Well, I, I guess I misunderstood the, the, the $1.5 million. It was my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that this was gonna be made largely from donations that were going to be fundraised.
It was originally what Gabe Schaefer proposed...
And I still was hoping that that's the way it was going to be.
For 25% of it.
At least, yeah. And I was also thinking that we were going to include, and part of this, $1.5 million, this soliciting funding from the county and from the Westwood School Division as partners.
Well, that to be seen.
You know, that was...
We're not there yet.
Yeah.
Correct.
It doesn't mean that it cannot happen.
I'm hoping that that's what's gonna happen.
But we don't know the answer there.
Yeah.
Councillor Drew?
So, yeah, my understanding was, $1.5 million is what we're gonna throw into the kitty, and whatever else we can get, you know, if we can get some grants from the golf association, if they're applying for something like that, or the pickleball association, that kinda stuff, that, that would help us out. And maybe we wouldn't have to spend that 1.5 if there were grants or donations or that kinda stuff. But I think, for me, my understanding was, two facilities, 1.5 million, that's kinda what we're willing to kick in as a town.
So, your understanding is the same as councillor Coe and councillor Brown? It could expand, and councillor Selk?
But there was more...
It could expand, and so the operational cost could expand also?
But that would have to be approved by council.
Okay, all right, so I appreciate, appreciate that, it's fair, we need to understand what everybody understands.
No, I, I have to concur with councillor Selk, when he said that if we get a, a great benefactor where we can take some money and put it into a trust fund, that's, could be used for those operations, and set aside for that, so that, that would ease the burden of the taxpayer, I'm on for something like that.
Fair enough, if we, if we speak it out, maybe we can appreciate it a little bit better.
The reason I'm saying that, the reason I'm saying that, is because we do have that with the library. We had a benefactor that donated some money, we put it into a trust account, and when we need some, that money for operations, it's there.
Okay.
You know, if we have to do some repairs, or upgrading, or whatever, we've got that.
Okay.
And it was very generous, and I'm hoping that maybe there'll be somebody that tells you, knows would be willing to do that.
Fair enough, fair enough, I just want to make sure we understand each other. Councillor Bantry?
My understanding is, we've got the 1.5 million for two buildings, and that the proposal come in at 1.1 for the rec center. Now, if we get donations, it was my understanding that the, the total of 1.5, or 1.1 million would not come out of, out of the town money, but it would be also donated to the building of this building. And then we could look at building a building which is expandable, so if we needed another, whatever, walking place, or gymnasium, or something built onto it, we could do that, or put that donation into a trust fund to expand this building. But I, I concur with the mayor that we gotta be very careful in the size of the footprint of the building, and the maintenance on it, because if you have a, if you have a pile of gym floors on it, the reason why the churches has gone away to the use of the, of the buildings is because of the wear and tear on those gym floors and the expense of res servicing them, and also their, you know, their, well, other areas of the, of the building was being accessed. But the big thing of it was, is the actual maintenance on those gym floors.
Okay.
And so they, you know, they went to carpet, and they went to hardwood, and so forth like that, so we need to be careful, you know, on what we're doing.
All right, so, to, if I understand properly, you will see the 1.5 million as being the donations, I mean, as being the contribution from the town, but that the operations will be controlled by council, and approved by council, in order to take in mind the taxpayer? Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Fair enough. So now that we understand each other, we can move forward.
I can speak to your concern on operations costs, mayor, I'm not a expert on this kinda stuff, so I'm not saying somebody's gonna walk in with a million dollars either, but if we expand the building, we've got a building of 12,000 or 13,000, whatever it is, it's gotta be maintained, if we add another 1,000 square feet onto it, I don't know if the cost would ever higher to maintain it, the building's already there.
Well...
It's not your concern, if we get too big, we got all this stuff that we have to operate.
I am not an expert on that.
Oh, I'm not either.
But when I saw the, the cost of operation on the first quotes, it was significant. And so, this is why it's important that we kinda nail it down sooner, sooner than later, in order to be able to have administration make all those calculations. We need to have that done sooner than later.
I'm pretty sure we're gonna be planning on charging people to use this building. I think that will cover some of your operation costs, for sure.
Oh, I'm sure there is a business case to be made, and revenue to be found, et cetera, I have no doubt in my mind that there is something like that. Councillor Selk?
Do we wanna enter into a philosophical conversation right now?
No, not really.
About the money we're gaining from ICF, from the county, that could go towards the operation of this?
Well, that is something that we will have to discuss, because that was not...
Next five years, yeah.
That was not originally the intent of that money, that money was intended to...
That's your view.
No, but hold on a minute. When we discussed the ICF, was to discuss the impact of the usage of a facility by taxpayer in town, towards what we have, and which costs the taxpayer in town a quarter of their tax money for recreation. That what it was intended to do. What we do afterwards is a different story, but what that was intend, let's not get mixed up here. Okay, so, we need a motion to get that sorted out. Councillor Selk, you put that motion forward, all in favor? Okay, so this one is put to rest. Eight, somebody? Councillor Brown?
I make a motion to direct administration to obtain updated library data usage, including any data related to programming or casual usage.
Any question, discussion?
Yeah.
Councillor Bantry?
How is the library gonna do that?
Oh, just...
Councillor Barnes?
Well, that's, that's not an issue at all. They, they have that information at their fingertips.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not a problem. For instance, when, when Donna and the chairman, Vern, went out to visit with the county during the ICF discussion at the beginning, they went there with all that data, they have it there, that's not a question. When we presented the data, they wouldn't accept it, and so we had to have Donna and Vern go out there, present exactly the same data, then once they got that, then they decided they weren't gonna go from there anyways, there was a question whether they're gonna support...
Okay.
Library funding at all, so we're still dealing with that. But no, that's not an issue at all.
Okay, I didn't think so. All in favor? Thank you very much. And then the last motion, councillor Coe?
Motion to direct administration to prepare draft land use bylaw amendments related to prohibition, related to prohibition for council review.
Right, and that is because of the new bill that has been introduced at the Alberta, by the Alberta government. So, all in favor? Thank you. Well, we done well. Thank you very much. Okay, we have five more minutes before the next. Think, maybe let's go towards the disaster recovery program funding.
We have a delegation here.
Yeah, in five minutes. Geoff, do you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can speak to it, so, you'll remember a few months ago, I brought you a resolution, and we weren't sure at the time how the rest of this was gonna play out.
Right.
So the rest is playing out, so to speak, and yet, we hadn't put that entire project in the budget. So the resolutions I'm requesting place the total project in budget with the total potential revenue. Now, just as a point of interest, we anticipate the project to come in about 400,000, less than that, but that's the total available funding, so I just use that number for both, in case it was a few dollars one way or another. Like we talked about previously, it wasn't stuck at the exact dollar the motion was. So that's the total allowable expenses under phase two.
So do we need to have a motion to that effect?
Correct, there's a resolution at the bottom of the RFD, yes.
That's right. Councillor Selk, would you like to do that for us?
Please do. No.
Go ahead.
Question for the...
Oh, we're going to have the motion brought to the table, and then we'll take questions, if you don't mind.
I'd like to move the council approved spending of $1,736,461.64 from account 2-24-230, disaster recovery capital, and to add the same amount of funding to income account 1-24-800, disaster recovery grant.
Okay, you have a question, councillor Barnes?
Have we received that money?
No, it's reimbursed after we incur the expenses.
At the end of the project.
But you've got a letter saying that they will?
Yeah, we do.
We have it black and white, man.
Yeah, to that point where the last engineer said he wasn't gonna give us the money, he was cutting us back 30% or something.
You and me both, councillor.
So that money is promised, and we will get it.
I mean, I'll feel a lot better when it's in the bank account, for sure.
Oh, of course, I will too.
Yeah, no, we went ahead because we had some assurance.
Okay.
The, the letter was sent to me, and I directly sent it to administration.
Okay.
How close are they just having this done, we know?
I think the golf course is about done, and then they'll move to the campground, and then they'll move to the Lee Creek intake. But they, those jobs get progressively smaller...
Right.
...as they go. So I would say, we told them November 14th, we would be completely billed and finished everything.
So, one other question. That big pile of rocks that was over there by the rotary, is that the total project? Or is that just for that area?
That's just there, yeah, that's just there.
Just that area?
Correct.
Okay. So are we ready to vote? All in favor? Thank you. Now, if you look at 6D before we entertain our first delegation, you have a new organizational chart. And Geoff, do you want to walk us through this one? It includes the golf course manager.
You bet. Under the CAO bylaw, I am required to inform council for a resolution of any changes to the org chart. We kind of had an odd management arrangement, an unconventional one at the golf course this year, where we had a shortened season, and then found somebody temporarily, but I was just looking this over, thinking, you know, we will have a full-time manager, full-time superintendent, and we hadn't added those as full-time equivalents on the org chart, so that, that's the only change. I think we tidied up a couple of other little things within it, but nothing of substance.
Okay.
So I just, a resolution to approve the updated org chart is all we need.
Right. So, I need someone to put a resolution forward. Councillor Drew, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the new organizational chart.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you very much. Well, it's just about quarter two, so we have quite a few people over there, but since I don't have my glasses, I'm afraid I don't recognize everybody, except for Mr. Schaefer, and I think, oh, we have Alex over there, and there's somebody else with him?
Ryan.
Ryan, okay.
And Melvin.
Melvin Easthope.
Oh, Melvin, okay, all right, so that's great. So, Gabe, if you'd like to come forward and maybe speak to us, and thank you for taking the time to address your little passionate project, which is the Recreation Centre. So, thank you first of all, for all the work you have done, we really appreciate your effort. We're not there yet, but we moving. So thank you so much for all you've done.
Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, well, I did ask what you were wanting me to say tonight, but I didn't get anything back, like...
Okay.
I was just told that I was supposed to come, and if there was any questions that were tabled, that maybe I could give some answers to that question.
Okay, so we can do it as a Q and A then, and it's, it's fair enough. So, Gabe, one of the question I have is regarding your different quotes. We started with 850,000 or so, then we had a little bit more than a million or so, and now we have yet a little bit more than a million or so.
Building keeps growing.
So this is what I am trying to understand regarding the growth of the building.
Okay.
So, your building is a multi-use.
Mm-hmm.
It was, first of all, the pickle...
Pickleball.
...ball courts, that was the first design. The second design included a volleyball and a track.
Mm-hmm.
What's the difference between, because we just got those paper today, what's the difference between the 1.028 million or something, and this, this 1.154 million that you presented here? Is that, again, an increase in size?
Yes, it is, and we were going with just one office, a smaller office building there that was about 1,200 square feet, now we've doubled the size of that, it's 2,400 square feet.
And the reason?
The reason was, it just gives us, I mean, if we're, if we're gonna do this, it gives us more opportunity to, to have other things become involved in the building itself. I just kinda went through, like, from where it was before, we had a basketball court, and, you know, and for, you know, it was gonna be, well, just go through it, I mean, there's, now we can put in there probably a total of 15 or 16 different things that can go on within the building.
Okay, can you list them for us, give us a little bit of a sense?
So you've got pickleball, okay, you've got basketball, you've got horseshoe pits that have been added in, bocce ball that's been added in, soccer, again, I don't understand how the soccer will play, but Paula tells me that they can use the building for soccer, removable batting cage for softball and baseball, so a high school could use it for, for a batting cage, we could set up permanently in there, but the cage would just move up and down to the ceiling. Pitching mound that could go in there as well, the walking track, which is quite a bit larger walking track than what we could have got in the other building. Of course, you mentioned volleyball, badminton, lacrosse, which is not a sport that is, far as I know, that's being played. There are kids going to Lethbridge to play lacrosse, so we don't have anything like that. Community exercise programs, that could happen either way, social gatherings could be the same, private clubs and organizations. They've got a new sport that I don't know anything about, it's called spike ball, but that's something that they've... but that's something that they've got in, you know, in town already. There's a group of people and they've had a tournament, I guess. I don't know how that went for them, but, yeah, there's a number of, the building has grown. But as the building grows, the price comes down per square foot.
Okay, so help me understand, you're talking about a price per square foot. So, when the building was first designed, was about 8,000 square feet at 850,000 dollars?
It was eighty-some hundred square feet, yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
How much did you say, sorry?
Was about 850,000 dollars, okay? So, then, now, the second version was about 12,000 square feet, which is about 50% more square footage. But the price difference was only 200,000 dollars in, added to the 850,000 dollars also. So, help me understand how adding 4,000 square feet could only equate to an extra 200,000 dollars?
I think that was the office portion that we were talking about. It wasn't 20-foot walls. There's not 20-foot walls in the office area. There are 10-foot walls and it's 1,200, I think it ended up being 1,200 square feet. So, I'm not 100% sure where you're coming up with those figures, but.
Well, it's just from your, from your, your paper, that's all where I get them from.
And I guess you got one of these new ones.
Yeah, but I'm trying to understand the difference, right?
Okay.
Because I'm trying to understand the realistic, the realistic estimate. And I just want to make sure we haven't overlooked anything.
Okay.
In the costing.
Obviously, building costs are gonna go up, your labor costs are gonna go up. I, I don't know, I can't pinpoint that. I don't have the, the very first one in front of me to say, okay, well, this is the reason it went up. I don't know what to tell you there. I could go research it and say, yeah, well, this is where it's at. But all I have is this, you know, with the building package. And, and again, these are a lot of, no, I shouldn't say a lot of them, but there are estimates in there. You know, like with your groundwork prep and that sort of thing, that's changed a bit. It has went up a little bit, but not a lot. Because, you know, when you pull equipment in there, it doesn't matter if you're, if you're going to do ground prep for a 15,000-square-foot building or a 10,000-square-foot building, your ground prep is pretty much the same amount of money. You're not a lot different, you know, just to, just to prep it. Your services stay the same. Excavation is gonna go up. I think I just, you know, tagged in there about another 5,000 dollars and that was a third more on excavation and backfill. Where your concrete slab goes up, you know, that's 650 a square foot. You got questions?
I just see in here that there's bowling lanes, is that part of the?
No. If it's got a zero in front of it, it's zeroed.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure I.
Counselor Bangry?
Yeah, you've got, you've got these drawn in as pickleball courts. And it's, it's a very good detailed drawing. Spectator areas for each one of these courts. Is there an area for spectator and also for team?
Well, if you look behind it, there's horseshoe pits that are movable. All that area behind it can be spectator for whatever sport.
Then, the courts would be glassed in or?
Nope.
Open court?
Just a full gymnasium.
And how about team holding areas? If we, if you hold a, you're obviously gonna get tournaments in there. So, if you've got other teams coming in, are they gonna be able to be dressed and in a holding area to watch the other teams play?
I would say that that's where you use your bocce ball horseshoe pits.
The next one, okay.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Or the front, or the front area. So, where it says, so I just want to be crystal clear. Where it says daycare, again, we're not meaning daycare, we're meaning a drop off.
Meeting place.
Exactly. And so, actually, something that got brought up today when we were talking to different groups in regards to the rec center is that the, that the hockey, when they have tournaments here, they never, when they have a tournament here, they'll play it this time and this time, and there's nowhere for them to go.
That's right.
And so, they need a place to go. And so, how sweet would it be to have an area like this where they can go? Because even now, due to COVID, they can't even go into a restaurant. So, it would be great to have a facility that, and so, when, and again, thank you so much, Gib, for all of your hard work. We have to applaud you because you've been a driving force and we really appreciate you, so thank you. But when you look at the front of this, that's, that's what can happen in this front end. So, when he says these things have been expanded, he's done so knowing that we want every piece of this building utilized. That's the goal. Because for every square footage we have, we want it to bring back money, right? And so, if, in fact, we are having tournaments use this as their standby facility, that's just good business.
Okay. So, if you don't mind me asking you one question. One, we talked to Delbert Biese at one point. The idea was, when he presented his concept, his idea was to have a multi-recreational facility on a golf course. Was going to be a fairly large, I mean, something large. Why is it that it's not a possible, a plausible solution for the pickleballer? Help me understand. I'm trying to, we never explored, as a council, the concept any further. It just seemed to have died, but I'm just trying to understand why.
Why not co-join both projects?
Yes, yes.
You could do whatever you want to do. I mean, you could add the clubhouse to it, it's just whether you have the space at the, at the golf course to do this without losing. I think the boys behind me don't want to lose, you know, a driving range, they don't want to lose. You know, there's not enough space on the top of that hill to put this building as it now stands and then throw a clubhouse in there besides. It'd be great if you did it, but.
And if there was space?
If there was space, it'd be just great to do something like that.
Is that something you, you would, as your association, entertain?
We're, we're up for whatever it takes to get a building that's going to house, you know, any number of things that, you know, could, it's like Paula said, I guess if you move it out of, out there, then, you know, is it usable for some of these other things that are in town?
Okay. Counselor Brown, Counselor Bangry? It's just a question that needed to ask because we never knew what happened.
So, actually, that, that's a great question and it did get brought up on our Parks and Rec Advisory Committee when we talked to Factor Five, Factor?
Yeah.
Yeah, Factor Five. It was looked at incorporating all of the buildings into one and having just one, one area. But as far as having two separate buildings and having the pickleball courts in the clubhouse at the golf course, the reason they brought up at the time was that the ceilings aren't high enough and Counselor Selk had brought that up. You can't, because of pickleballers, you have to have, it's my understanding, you have to have the higher ceilings. And so, that's one thing that this building incorporates, is it's got the really high ceilings so that we can have some of these volleyball, these sports that include that high ceiling. And again, we're trying to, it was the, we didn't have enough land at the golf course. That's something that was huge when we discussed it. They're just, to make our blueprint, the size that they wanted to, that incorporated as much as we wanted to, they just couldn't figure out where to put it out there. And they figured it would be too far, is what was brought to the rec board.
Okay. So, that is one explanation, obviously. Counselor Bangry?
Gib, as with real estate and everything else, location, location, location. So, if you put a building like this out at the golf course, is a school gonna be willing to, to bus their, their students out there and use that building? Or is it, does it have to be in a downtown area, centrally located, in a, in a central location area for the, also for the residents to access it, you know? And, and we got a lot of seniors that are gonna be working in this building. Do they want to be driving out there in a, you know, in bad weather and so forth like that? And I, and I, this isn't a building for a clubhouse. This, this building isn't for a clubhouse.
Well, thank you for your opinion, Counselor Bangry. Counselor Bonds?
I, I concur. I think that the location by the school, far superior to, to having to try and bus kids out or have them use their own vehicles or whatever. And the seniors are gonna want to be close to downtown. I think that the, that the clubhouse is a separate, is a separate entity and it has, it has its own draw for its, for the golfers and stuff. And so, I don't think you want to mix the two. Personally, I think the two buildings, that the one down here by the school and one out the golf course.
Any further comments regarding that? Thank you, Counselor Bonds. No? Any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Selk.
Mayor, you're talking about the document we gave you last week versus this week.
Yeah.
I think you can sum it up pretty simply if you look under flooring. Gib did his original estimate, he put it in at 75,000 and then did some more research and come to find out that put flooring in there that's universal, substantially more expensive than what he originally anticipated. Is that correct, Gib?
Yeah.
I think if you're looking at the price difference.
If I could have looked at that, I probably would have picked up on that. But the flooring itself is NBA-quality flooring. There's, like I told Gary, 19 of 30-some teams have this specific flooring in there. And it's basically the top flooring in the world as far, it would put to shame any other floor within the Westwind School Division. It's just, it's a great floor. It's great for walking on, great for basketball.
More bulletproof.
Yeah, it, it actually lasts, it actually will last the life of the building, that floor. So, it's not like a hardwood floor that's gonna be, anyway, you're not putting any more money into it.
Okay.
And it's cheaper than hardwood.
Now, in talking with the county, did you get a sense that they were 100% behind it or that there was any interest toward participating in that type of project in town? And I know you just made a presentation, but what is your humble opinion of the desire of the county to help us? Because at first, you presented this project to the town as 25 the town, 25 the county, 25 the school board, and 25 in donation percentage. So, give me a little bit of a sense of the school and the county. The donation, that's something else that you're going to be working and we know you will work like the dickens to make that happen, I know that. So, give me a sense a little bit. Give me an update.
When I went to the county, their question was, is the town 100% on board? So, maybe you can answer that question for me, is the town 100% on board, so I can talk to the county?
Okay, we have no motion, neither do they, essentially, that's where we are.
Are they 100%? No, I, I can't say they're 100% because I can't get 100% out of you, so.
Well, to get 100%, you know what we need? We need figures that stop moving around all over the place. We need to have detail as to how much it's going to cost us to really put it off the ground. We need to have a sense of what the expense of the, the.
Can I make a suggestion to you?
Go ahead.
You tell me what your budget is, we build a building to match your budget.
But we don't.
If you give me a build, if you say we've got 1.5 million, then we build a building that fits your budget.
Well, we just passed a motion. We have 1.5 million between two buildings. That is it. That is our offering.
Tell me how much of a, you know, what's the money here and what's the money here?
But the 1.5 million dollar, council agreed that it was our town's money, not, not including your donations.
Mayor, if I might.
Go ahead.
So, to simplify this, Gib, I think if you're making presentations to the county, you can tell them that the town has skin in the game to the tune of a million dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything over and above that will go to either equipping the inside, seeing what the building can do, but that's what the town's skin in the game is, because we just passed that motion.
So, and, and I've heard not good reports back from Westwind, but I think Westwind has to do something. I think that they are obligated to do something on this building. I don't know. And I think the town has some leverage to, you know, push for Westwind to step up, pony up with some money. But I think from what I was told is if they were to pony up for 300,000 dollars, it would be over five years. So, there, you're, you know, you've got 60,000 dollars a year that you're gonna get for five years. Somehow, we have to be able to utilize that money before five years is up because we hope the building is up and going by next October.
Okay, but we have no, no firm commitment from the school board at this time, correct?
At this time, we have no firm commitment.
Okay. So, no, it's fair, we need to know that, right? Counselor Bangry?
Gib, I want to stand in your place for a minute. I appreciate the amount of hours that you have put into this. And I don't see any billing for that.
Any which, sorry?
Any bills for your time. And I appreciate that.
That's all coming.
I want you to be aware of that. So, when you, when you start nailing down.
When I start which down?
When you start nailing down designs and, and quantities and stuff like that, there's some, a lot of companies will nail you with a price. You know, and, but I, I see this, I, I see this bid and you've put in many, many hours and I appreciate that. I want you to be aware of that.
Can I just ask you one more thing? Originally, when you did your first presentation, you were going to have a company kind of do an estimate of the cost and all that.
A company estimator, is that what you said?
Did you?
Just for the building, that was basically it.
And can you share with us how much did, that the estimate come at?
Yeah, it's right there on your, right there on the quote.
Was that Wes Ken or somebody?
Yeah, Wes.
We had, we had another one that, it was, it was way out to, there's no way we could afford a building like that. Wes Con at the left.
Wes Con, so, yeah.
But, okay, so the difference in price was what they were putting inside or was the building material?
Okay, well, let's go to the building package right there, 196, I can't read it, 662.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
So, so that's the building package right there.
Ryan?
Okay, and, and that's what I have, or what they have given me for a building package and that is according to this print that you have. Now, this here will definitely change again. This is just a footprint. It does show a, you know, a, an elevation here with the building and it, but you can see how the building has grown from where it was just peaked and peaked. And then, you see this little side out there? That was added after, 34 by 120 feet was added after. So, that's the, that's why the building cost went up. And also, we doubled the size, we ended up putting a daycare center, if you want to call it that, whatever you want to call it. I'd like to see something else there, but, you know, I had to put something on it. I guess I should have maybe left it blank, but something can go in there. It could be change rooms for the football team, we already discussed that. It could be, you know, change rooms for basketball teams that are coming in. But I don't see that happening per se, but it could be used for a number of things, so it's well.
All at flex space.
No, all right, that's great. So, I have one more question. The location. The location seems to kind of be here and there. I heard two different location at this point. And I heard the Egewood location and I heard the Little League location.
The baseball diamond?
Right.
Okay.
So, where are we going here? So where are we going here?
EJ Wood is your number one spot.
Because?
It's has, it, there's very little ground prep there. Services are all there, three-phase power is all there. Like, you're, you're going to be across from the school. I guarantee the school will use that building a lot more if it's sitting across the road from them. It just is a nicer location as far as, you know, down below there. The reason that the pool is built up like that is basically, if you go back in time, that whole area down in, along the creek there is floodplain. You know, you throw a million-dollar building down there, you're going to be in a floodplain unless you actually do a heck of a lot more groundwork than what you're going to do, you know, to, to build that up. You can see how the pool's built up and then there's that one section of land to the south of it that is four feet up and then drops off quite quickly both ways to the alley and to the, you know, the pool was, at least they had foresight to raise the pool up out of, you know, so floods were not a problem for the pool. But if, if we go in there, we have to either build up another four feet and then we've got to take and go back down for pilings and everything else to shore this building up. Costs are going to drive it up even higher.
But I appreciate you bringing that aspect. I never thought of that one, I must say.
Yeah.
So thank you so much.
If I might, because I was involved in the building of the new library, that was exactly the problems we found there, Gib. We got underneath, when we got into the ground, we found nothing but muddy soup.
Yeah.
It was awful. We had to put extra pilings in there and that brought our costs up considerably. So I, I wouldn't be in favor of down below, up, up top, EJ's.
All right.
My preferred place, because I know what we did over there.
Thank you so much. I mean, I'm grateful that you are here, that we can ask those questions so that clear up a little bit our understanding. Yes, Councilor Ben-Gree?
Councilor Self, I was not able to come over to, to view that property. Is there adequate parking?
Hmm.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, in fact, Councilor, there's more than enough parking and you can actually add additional outdoor recreation facilities there. There's lots of space.
Good.
The one thing that you could do there as well is move that building all the way to the front, leaving the back portion open and still do senior facilities in there for, for housing if you wanted to do something like that in behind the building. The thing that I would look at is, is to sit down with Jensen, what?
Brandon.
Brendan?
Brandon, right. Brandon Jensen and, and actually sit down with the plan, put the footprint on the plan, see what you got left over, what you can do, you know, for, for housing and whatnot in there, you know, for seniors. If, if that's, because I understand that was, you know, what you're kind of holding the land back for was senior development or something like that in there.
That was intent originally, at least a council ago.
Mm-hmm. Would make a nice seniors facility. Hence, you know, move it up to the golf course. But again, it's not your number one area if you're looking to, you know, put a facility like this. Number one, I don't think the golf course wants it up there. Number two, it, it is a much better facility if it was located right there, kind of central. Number three, there's lots of parking if you, you know, at times, I don't know, what's the golf course? You got lots of parking up there?
With Dan, huh?
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, if you start going into there, there, something has to go, you know, with the golf course. You're, you're going to interfere with your parking, your sheds, you know, storage for your carts, a lot of different things. But I would not be in favor of going there, but I'll go anywhere you want to go.
Okay, well, that's something that council will ultimately decide, but it's good to have had that conversation. Are there any other questions? Otherwise, we will thank Mr. Schaefer. And Gib, I really appreciate you coming.
Mm-hmm.
Because the more we understand the magnitude of the project and a little bit more the location, et cetera, and the usage of the building, then we can start to understand revenue-wise what it could look like, et cetera. Because the more users, the better it is for us, obviously.
Mm-hmm. You also are, down below there, you're also putting in new storm sewer, I think, through there. Your building would be right on top of your storm sewer. You'd probably be smart to relocate that storm sewer if you're going to put the building there.
On a?
On the ball field.
Ball diamond.
The new one we're putting in.
I've seen that, three feet of water.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Lipped it up.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gib.
Thank you. Well, do we go on with?
Delbert, he's here.
Is Delbert here?
Yes, he is, sir.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I cannot see him.
Lighting in the shadow of his hat.
Oh, well, there you go. Okay, Delbert, if you'd like to come forward.
I'm supposed to be wiping this down every delegation here. Turn on your evaluation.
Like facet testimony.
Yeah.
I'm forgetting here.
I've been up and down to it ten times. I should be cleaning it up.
Church, haven't you seen what they do there?
Do I have to answer that in public meeting here?
Thank you so much.
Couldn't resist the feces, huh?
Delbert, you just at your hat create too much shade where you were sitting. I can see your face.
Been working out in the wind all day. I apologize for my snow coat, but it was cold out there today.
Yes.
I wasn't dressed warm enough, so.
Well, go ahead. So, Delbert, you, we wanted to hear from you. You heard a little bit of the presentation from Gib regarding one of the facility or one idea of the facility. So please take it away.
Well, I, I haven't sat down with Gib for a while now to talk about facility. What I've heard, it's changed a lot since the original conception. So my only concern, and, and I'm sure it's council's concern, are the operational costs after you build a building. And, and that has to be factored in, in whatever size of building you build. I mean, even our clubhouse, we're looking at what the operational costs are going to be. So in that context, to say, would we like the rec center up there or the community, whatever we're calling it? For our clubhouse and a full-time restaurant, we would love another facility there that would accommodate year-round use of our clubhouse. So that would be a benefit to us to have that. The more people that are there using our facility, the restaurant's going to be busier and, and that benefits us in the long run. Rather than being an eight-month, eight-to-nine-month facility, it now becomes a twelve-month, year-round facility.
Right.
So, and I, you know, for room, does it, there's room there, but it means we have to change things. So I can see our golf cart storage being gone, our, our, our maintenance shop being gone, that tent being gone. And when all those are cleared out of there, then there's quite a bit of room there.
But then you have to re.
Pull up the jazz.
Yeah, you could do, yeah.
Could you get me on air?
Yeah.
Get me on the air media?
That would beg the question, where would you put your storage for?
Underneath the rec center.
[laughing]
That's the perfect storage for golf carts, is in a basement somewhere.
They've got a basement design with it.
I, I, I will have a lot of members mad at me for saying this, but ultimately, the golf course shouldn't have cart storage for private people. That's my own opinion. I think the town should, or the golf course should offer membership with a golf cart. I've never owned a golf cart because I couldn't see paying two hundred and fifty dollar a year trail fees plus storage plus the maintenance on a golf cart. It just made no sense for me. So that's my own opinion.
If I could, Mayor, I just want to point something on here. I pulled this up and I, I'm just taking a wild swing at space here. So that red circle is two hundred, oh, and I just lost my number here. That's two hundred by one fifty.
That's?
That's red square. So the building proposed here is one-ten by one-twenty. So that's two hundred by one fifty, again. And then there's all that room to the northeast of it, right? So where the practice green is and then going to the driving range, you can move your tent, you can move all that stuff fairly easy. But just to give you an idea of, let's call it relatively level space.
Yeah.
Because it starts to drop off after you go too much further, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and the drop, and the drop-off further would, I mean, I mean, we're, we're considering our proposal, if bowling lanes or nothing's going to be put in a basement, but that's where our cart storage would be and it would have ground out access on the east, northeast side. But that's still something we've got to look at, you know, cost-wise, so, but.
Okay, so that is the original large print, that would be about twelve thousand square feet?
That's much bigger than what the blueprint is.
It's bigger than the twelve thousand square feet.
Yes. Yeah, that's, wouldn't that be thirty thousand? Yeah, that's thirty thousand square feet.
Okay, so space is not the issue. What is more the issue is from here accessibility. And for seniors, for students, it's more what the issue seems to be when I hear around the council table. Is that what I heard?
Yes.
So if that is the case and if there's less of an appetite of council to go with a multipurpose building over there, then can you give me a little bit of a sense of what you could do? Well, you heard how much, the motion that we made, maybe you didn't, I don't know.
I, I have heard just.
Okay, so. So combined, there's one point five million dollar, let's say one million dollar for the golf course and about.
No. That sounds great, Mayor.
One, yeah. The other way around. Yeah, yeah, don't, don't, don't put your highs, your hopes too high.
Where's the press? Where's the press? You can get that out.
So, so one million for the rec facility and four hundred, well, five hundred or thereabout.
Approximately.
For the clubhouse. So that is what the town is capable of funding that thing in capital.
Sounds great. How much do my taxes go up?
Yes, exactly. That's a point. How much are you coming with donations? That's what I, I, I like to know.
The more donations, the better.
So my original proposal and our proposal to the council was that we weren't going to ask for anything except for some groundwork.
Okay.
So, and that hasn't changed, even though seventy percent increase in lumber has happened in the last six months.
Okay, so your cost estimate, what would that be? What is the restaurant's size?
Well, that's.
Can you scale that down from the original drawing to make it more something like maybe, I don't know, fifty-capacity extended with a hundred-capacity outside or something like that?
Yeah, that, that scale was like, the drawing I gave you was just a specific, like a sample drawing of what the building would look like.
Right.
We're, we're more concerned with the, the building sitting on the edge of the hill.
Right.
With the ability to overlook the whole golf course. A beautiful facility and we've seen that this year with more golfers, nobody could go to the States. Covid kept people home and kept money local. And I hope those numbers continue, I hope Covid doesn't continue, but I hope the numbers continue to be there.
I have that original drawing here, Delbert, I'm just seeing if I can find it, flag email.
Right. Because I think this is what we're looking at. So that brings me back to your MOU and now some things that we need to quite, need to understand a little bit better.
Yeah.
And I have, I don't know if anybody has questions regarding the MOU, but I have plenty. Okay. Can we first of all bring that up and then, Councilor Brown, Councilor Self?
You all have it on your devices.
Okay.
So, yeah, just in regards to memorandum of understanding, my association's concern is that council could change before this is built. And with the new council, there's new ideas, there's new changes of ideas, opinions, and then the, it could get, be stopped essentially, right? So I just wanted the memorandum of understanding signed by the council and administration that this is what's going forward. And so I thought originally it was going to come from Jeff and, and the town, and he says, well, can you throw something together? And so I threw something together. But this is all it is, is just thrown together. So it needs to be open for discussion. I tried to include everything in there that I could think of in my, my own mind, but there may be things missing from the council's perspective and administration's perspective. And this isn't a written-in-stone document, by all means.
Okay, so maybe let's, let's look at it.
Yeah.
And I have a few questions for you and maybe can help me.
You bet.
And if council has other questions regarding it, please make sure you, you ask. For example, under one purpose and C, you have allowed the association to control the design, construction, and finishing of the said clubhouse.
Yeah.
So that I have an issue a little bit with it. And the same issue with the recreation facility. I really honestly believe that the only viable solution for us is to have a tandem with the town, with all on Brendan Jensen, to have the oversight of it.
Yeah, this, so this, this is not talking about the oversight. This is talking about.
But you controlling.
We present our design, council approves the design, and then we get one wall up and council comes out and says, well, we really should move that wall over here, or maybe you should have built it over here. And, and we want to be able to take that design and say, the council's approved this design, we're going to finish the project.
Yeah.
And so that's the control I'm talking about.
Okay.
It's not, it's not, if, if the town and Brandon or administration comes and says, you know, that your footing's got to be deeper, that's all part of permitting, that's not the control we want. We, we're fine with that.
Okay.
It's changing, it's changing the structure or the intent halfway through the project or quarterway through the project that we don't want to have happen.
All right. So the reason I'm asking is because you have the word construction in the middle of that C. So that's what I'm talking when I'm saying, you know, anything to do with purchasing, with all that thing, we're well-equipped to do that.
Yeah.
And when it come to being at, on specs, we should have ability to control that because it's a building that ultimately will be ours.
Yes, yeah.
So we need to make sure it's built at specs.
Yeah.
And with costs that are controlled more or less.
Yeah, it would have all.
Would that work?
It would have to fit all the permits, the building code, the.
Right.
Plumbing, gas, electric, all those codes would have to be met.
So that is something that is not offensive to you.
So the only, yeah, no.
Okay.
And, and that control definition changes because now you're given as five hundred thousand dollars. That you weren't initially, right?
We haven't given you nothing yet.
I know, that's what I'm saying. It, it changes the context of that control.
But, right. So we need to really understand a little bit that relationship. If we are, if we have a deep skin in the game, we need to understand what it looks like.
Yeah.
And we don't want a building so excessive that the operational costs that you referred to originally at the beginning of your talk are going to be extraordinary and, and unsightly burden to the taxpayer.
Yeah.
So you were aware of that and we grateful. And if your donation can, can cover the portion of the town, so much better.
Then Gib will be happier.
Right?
Then Gib will be happier.
Well, he won't get the ballots.
Oh, he won't?
Well.
All right, Gib, I tried.
So, no, I mean, we, we have to play the game so that the taxpayer is not impacted ferociously.
Yeah.
Just for recreation in town, right?
Yeah. No, and that, and that wording, like I, like I mentioned, that wording on this document can change. This is just a, a working document essentially, so. This is just a, a working document essentially, so.
Okay.
And my legalese is not there. You probably noticed spelling mistakes, and I can't even get the type to be the same from C to F, so.
Okay, so that brings me to your G then. Maybe, maybe all that in the context of the financing changes a little bit focus. You say outline the commitments of the association to the town for continued support of, to the association on care and maintenance of the golf course beyond current council. So if I understand your MOU, you want to have control of the whole of, of the operation of the golf course and its management?
No, so this is for the.
So I'm just trying to understand, what's the relationship with the management?
Well, so the term of the MOU would be tele-completion of the project. If council, if, if council said, for example, that the association has done a great job, they built the facility, they haven't burdened the town with excess fees or whatever they want to say, and there's an opportunity to extend to the association the management of the course, then I wouldn't want that door left open.
Okay, all right, so that clarifies a few things for me because I was not clear with this, what exactly you had in mind regarding management.
Years ago, the association ran the golf course.
So, but essentially, right now, the MOU covers a period of the, the construction of the building?
Yep.
Okay, so here is another aspect then, regarding insurance. Who covers that if you are in control?
Well, we're, we're in control of the building, so we could, we can have building insurance, but somebody's going to have to back us because we're having volunteers come, so the contractors that are coming to work will have their own insurance for themselves, but the building itself will have to be under the town's insurance. So when anybody builds a facility, whether it's residential or commercial, you can buy building, building insurance while it's, while it's being built. And I think, I think back to John Bright, was it John, wasn't John, was it? Did he move the motel?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, it fell off the wheels on the way up the hill or whatever happened, and, and the insurance stepped in to finish, you know, putting it where it needed to be.
He actually didn't. He didn't have any insurance.
Okay, he didn't have insurance.
And, and, no, it wasn't, it wasn't John that didn't have the insurance, it was the mover that didn't have the insurance. And they had a long extended court case, and the judge realized that at the time, that the mover had lots of money. And he chose not to do insurance, so the judge awarded John the money from the mover. He had to come up with the money himself. That's what happened.
There's insurance can be bought for it. Eventually, the ownership has always been the town's.
Okay.
The association will not own anything there.
Yeah, can, can you give me, go ahead, Counselor Bangry.
Delbert?
Yes.
In all honesty, is a recreation center building good for a destination golf course?
I haven't seen.
The answer to that is, as far as I'm concerned, is no.
Well, I haven't seen everything going in there, but I know pickleball probably isn't a draw for golfers. That's just my, but I haven't played pickleball yet, so.
It's a good sport?
I'm not sure.
With your golf clubs.
Huh?
You can try pickleball with your golf clubs.
There you go, I might be able to.
I have another question. Under town support, under B, you say the town will provide capital for the services to new clubhouse, including but not excluding utilities, engineering, environment, gravel, earthwork and landscaping. So that is about the extent of our $500,000?
Well, I would hope it's not that much.
Well, I hope so not.
There's already been an engineering study done there previously, whether the town will recognize that is going to be the key thing.
Okay.
Environmental is not an issue. The utilities are already there, except for the sewer is not connected, I believe.
Yeah, it's got to go to the Alison Development, the fairway.
Yeah.
So that's expensive?
I don't, I think, isn't it dug in there already? It's just not connected.
I don't know that for sure.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought it was already dug into a.
It's in the parking lot.
It's in the parking lot, yeah.
Okay, because when we add all those costs, once the $500,000 is gone, is gone, right? So after that, you have to come up with the rest.
Yep, no, it's understood.
Is that fair?
Yep.
Okay, fair enough. Okay, any other questions that you guys may have? Counselor Court?
Yeah, looking at 1D, you came here a year or so ago and made the presentation of what you would like to see it, et cetera, and you were talking about fundraising for all of it. Don't ask this question if you don't want to, but have, have you done any fundraising? Is there any money there yet?
I, I have no money in my pocket, but I've had commitment. Now, to, to back that up, some of those commitments have disappeared with Covid. Some corporations have shut down, and so those donations won't be there.
Okay.
Okay.
So whether, whether it changes after the US election in a month, I don't know, but.
Might disappear.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, that was actually one of my questions. The other one was, so where are you at with your association? Have those papers been filed? Are you good to go?
I haven't filed the papers. They're all made up and signed, but I haven't filed them because I want to have this understanding before I proceed.
Okay.
There's no use, there's no use, in my mind, there's no use forming an association, it isn't going to do anything.
Right.
And, and then it's the same as the old Lee Creek, whatever the association was called, it's just sitting there dormant.
Okay, so just to be clear, so we don't, you don't have any money in your pockets right now lined up for this project?
No.
So if in fact the town was not, did not have half a million dollars set aside, it wouldn't be happening right now?
No, no.
And as far as a building, blueprint goes or something, I did see the previous one, right?
Yeah, we've got the sample one. We haven't done the, the final blueprint on it because of size.
And of course, you didn't know how much money they were dealing. Is that, is that fair? And then, so as far as council is saying you have half a million dollars and this, let's say, we tweak it, we get this good to go, how soon realistically do you picture being able to get going on this?
Well, this is, this is just my opinion.
Yeah, for sure.
But if you said we had $500,000, I'd have a cat in there tomorrow tearing the old clubhouse down. Because if we don't get something in the ground right away, it's going to be, like, then, then we come to spring and we say, okay, how can we build a new clubhouse here and operate for the next season?
But I guess, I agree 100%, but I, I guess my question is, if in fact you rip our fabulous, stinky clubhouse out right now, before we have something to replace it, especially when we have no funds, no other money coming in, when we're not in association, when we don't have drawings, I, that's a concern for me.
Yep.
Right?
And that's understandable, yeah.
I feel like, because just in order to get an association, that's three to four months just to get that. So we can't even apply for grants through you guys until you have that status, is my understanding.
Well, yeah, status won't take that long. I've registered the name, okay, so I've spent $75 to register the name. So nobody else can register that name.
Good.
It's just sending the signed documents in.
Okay.
So, but it, but it's, but there's still a concern with grant funding.
Right.
Because grant money to a new association, what we looked at, the same as an association's been operating for 20 years.
Okay.
Because the money's just not around for grants like it used to be.
Thank you.
And I really think there is another element. You were talking about fundraising. And fundraiser normally, people who give money normally want also to have a nonprofit status, right? Now, the filing of for nonprofit, as far as I know, takes over a year or around a year. And with a Covid backlog, it's probably going to take longer.
It could, yep.
So, but I understand, and that's true for either recreation facility, the town can become the one who gets the funding and gets, gives a tax receipt. So for either facility, that is true.
Yes.
The rest is just.
And that's what my understanding was.
The rest is just a matter of incorporating or creating the association, and that's really filing the paper with the government.
Yep.
So the sooner the better, right? I mean, if you have the paper, it may as well have that.
I talked with Jeff, that the, the, one of the concerns I have is a fundraiser for this facility. Because some people will donate funds without any recognition, they don't need a tax receipt. Others want a tax receipt. And I don't want it to happen that I get a $50,000 donation from someone, he's expecting a tax receipt. The town issues the, the receipt, he files his taxes and they come back and say, you're not eligible. So I'm asking Jeff to make sure that this proposal for this building and using the town's tax number is going to be okay.
But I mean, I understand that. The other, the other thought that came to my mind as Counselor Brown was talking about the idea of, are you prepared, are you shovel ready, et cetera? It doesn't appear so. So what I'm concerned about is that, at which point, which is a question that you are asking of council at the beginning, at which point are we willing to really support that project move forward? And for us, it goes back to another question, at which, I think, at which point in a fundraiser is the town ready to say, okay, you now have that much money, now we can solidify the project and say, go ahead for sure? Because it come a point where the town cannot go alone on that one. And if there is not the money from the association and the fundraiser, the project is difficult to lift off the ground, right?
Yep.
And it's true for both facilities, the, the truth of the matter is, is truth on both sides. It'll come a point where we have to say, yes, we have enough partnership, enough grant, enough money that allow us to give the 100% motion, go ahead and go. It's very difficult for council to spend money without knowing, as you said, what the impact on the taxpayer because if the taxpayer is in for capital and for operational, that's too much.
Yeah, so what I will say, it was in January when I sent this memorandum, the request for this to be done. January of 2020.
Yeah, but there was still question because we didn't have the blueprint.
I'm just saying, it's been, it's been 10 months waiting for this part so I could go ahead with the second part.
Yeah, but the, the reason being that we need to have a sense of the scale of the project, right? And, and at first it was a mega project, and now it can no longer be a mega project.
Well.
So it has to change, it has to be revised, and then give us a sense that would build a bit more trust into the venture. That's just my thought.
So I heard Gibb asked the same question. What is the town willing to pay for operation costs then? For a facility, because for, for us right now, we can, we can build a dream world facility there, but we have to, the town has to maintain the operation. So if I build a facility that your new manager at the golf course can't make enough equity for through the year to pay for, then that's coming out of taxpayers' dollars.
Well, this is why I say, at this point, $500,000.
If you want us to build a, just a new building the size of the one that's there, then that's what we'll budget for. If you want us to do something a little larger, to plan for other things in it, then we can do that too.
Well, right now we have $500,000, and as far as I could see, the other building is willing to have 13 different type of activity within it. So I don't see how much more we can do on your facility. So maybe let's try to think about it. Counselor, you have to help me there. Are you looking at a clubhouse with a restaurant, a small restaurant? And that would be what we're looking at, a nice kind of building?
I was just going to ask you, Delbert, just give us a real quick version of your style of a clubhouse that you would like to see out there. I mean, what all, what all is going to be inside of it?
Well, so, so a lot of that will depend on the operation after it's built. So as an association, if the town's going to look to us to operate it, then we need revenue generating events in that facility to make it operational. So that's why the bowling alley was suggested, the, the golf rooms are suggested for year-round golf simulation. You know, those kind of things that can generate revenue plus the restaurant. Alcohol sales are going to be key to that, I'll say it again, and I'm not afraid to be unpolitical or whatever the new word is, but it, it's going to have to happen, both for the operation of the golf course, but also for the safety of the golf course. You, you can't stop something from being there if you're not making it legal to be there. And for people in Carson to say that there's no alcohol on the golf course, they need to go and clean the garbage cans out at night. Because it's there. And I can't say we've had any incidents at the golf course related to alcohol, but there probably have been some, but I'm not saying, because I don't know. But uncontrolled alcohol consumption is not good for anybody. And so a restaurant, a licensed restaurant that controls the amount of consumption with their meals, I think is a good thing and a positive thing for Carson. So those are things, those are, again, things that, that are going to determine the size, and if the town just wants us to build a facility and you guys are going to operate it, then you need to tell us what size you want to operate.
Yeah, but as I say, originally it was supposed to happen with strictly donation and, and thing.
And it still can.
So we have given you an olive branch, do something with it.
Well, I can, I could probably build a $500,000 clubhouse there. Is it what we want, or is it what the town wants? I'm not sure.
That's all what we got for money. Counselor Drew?
Delbert, when you first came to us, you, you kind of had an idea as to what you wanted to build.
Yep.
Did we ever, I thought we heard a number of kind of what you thought it would cost.
Yeah, I've got it somewhere. It, it depends how much.
Five million.
So I had a lot of contractors volunteering their time, but that depended on the time of year. And so I'm glad we didn't start at this fall because there's no contractors available to do anything.
Just one quick question. You've got golfers in here. How many, how many golf clubs in Alberta actually run a year-round restaurant? You know of any?
Anderson tried it.
Paradise Canyon. Is Anderson new year-round too?
Anderson Lake doesn't. Not a year-round.
Not very many, yeah.
They tried it.
And those are in cities.
Cities with other restaurants, which Carson doesn't have very many. I can't find, I thought, I thought it was around the $750,000 mark for the size that we had there, but like I said, it can be scaled down, scaled up, whichever. I mean, right now, the, with the price of lumber, I'm, I'm thinking that we would look at commercial metal construction because the lumber costs are so high, but we haven't done any estimates on that, but.
All right, so is, would it be fair, counsel, to ask Delbert to kind of, kind of rescale his building and bring back a new drawing, knowing that all what we have is $500,000, but it's already will need to cover quite a few of other things?
I really think that they need to look at the, the industrial metal because lumber is very high. I mean, I just finished a project just under the gun, and I watched prices go up 40%, 50%, crazy. And metal hasn't done that. And probably for a safety factor, it's better off to, to frame it with the metal anyway.
Yeah.
Counselor Self?
A temple's got metal framework in there, it's, it wasn't built with wood. The metal is quite good, actually, a lot longer.
I would ask council, let's get this document signed before I spend any more time and money. I need, I need to know that council and, is, is behind a new clubhouse. I don't care about the money part because our Ted is still to fundraise for it, so.
Okay, so I think would it be fair then to have you and Jeff work together
Absolutely.
on the rewording maybe of some of those sections?
Like I said, I'm not a wordsmith or a legalese.
Would it be okay to make it more of a legal looking document?
Yep.
Okay, fair enough.
I suggest also that Jeff's involved so that we look at the legal aspect of this and, you know, our role.
Yeah.
It's got to be binding.
Counselor Self?
So a question first.
Go, go ahead. Go, go ahead.
Delbert, under the society commitments you have planning, is that, that paragraph, does it talk about, you talk about business plans and ongoing operation plans? Is that for you guys?
That's mainly for us, but...
Do you run the clubhouse?
Well, that could be the future plan, right? That's, but that's up to council.
Okay, so, that part needs to be straightened out between you and Jeff, because I'm a little unclear on that whole plan piece.
Me, too.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, and, and so the context has changed with council having money to put into it all of a sudden, right? From what the original intent was, that we were gonna raise all the funds, all the volunteer labor, all the contractors, and the town's contribution was just the services.
Well...
So... Which is still a financial contribution.
It's for services. I don't know how much those services would cost. So, there's a pocket of money there.
Yeah.
It does not cover everything, obviously. Okay. Anything else, counselors? Counselor Brown?
This is more of a question, because I'm new to council. So...
You're over four years.
Ah, looking around the table, I'm a pretty newbie. So, I guess my question is...
Or the old.
Anywho, my question is, is this not, if in fact we go this route, it, to me, still sounds like we're over a year away into getting a new clubhouse by this...
I don't know.
Realistically, does it not?
I don't know.
So, then, so then, why would this council then approve a document that the next council can overturn, which you brought up, right?
That's a very good point.
That's a valid concern.
That's, I don't want it overturned halfway through a project.
I get it. But you know what I mean? The next council could come in, look at this, and say...
They could. But if it's three quarters done or half done, they probably wouldn't, right? But, but you're right.
I mean, it's the next, it's the next one.
Sorry, just to finish my question. So, do you realistically see that, and I apologize, I didn't know that we've been sitting on this since January. That hurts my feelings a little. But is it realistic to then assume that you could, this could be pulled off? And I'm only speaking to this because we only have a year left.
Yeah.
And not that I'm trying to rush through anything or be crazy with the taxpayer money. That's not my intent. My intent is that this council, as of today, is saying we have half a million dollars to spend on a building at the golf course. And to me, that means I want something built there. So, that is what this community needs and wants. So, do you think it's realistic?
Well, yeah. You can, you can build year-round. There's, there's extra cost to do that, but it can be done. Ideally, it would have been nice to have cement in the ground right now.
Right.
Because the above the cement can be done, you know, you, you can get something shelled in pretty quickly. With wood, you can, but with metal, it's even quicker, the commercial stuff.
So, what I'm hearing is, you're saying it's realistic?
Yeah.
You, you can see your group coming together, getting this signed, getting the wordsmith happening, and getting your people together and ready to go.
I think so. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Bangery?
One more question, Delbert. With the, with the money that you raise in fundraising, what is that gonna be earmarked for?
For the clubhouse.
For the building.
For the building of the clubhouse.
Strictly. So, it's gonna go directly to the town?
Would you enlarge the footprint of the, of the original building, or would you just look at the interior and, and add it as, like kitchen equipment and stuff like that?
It would be, yeah. It would be enhancing the inside of the facility. So, so if the town comes back to us, or Jeff, whoever I'm talking with, and says, we think we can maintain a 2,000-square-foot building, operational-wise, then that's what we've got to work on.
Okay.
All right. So, essentially, what you want, moving forward, you want the MOU kinda dealt with.
Yeah.
And then you want a firm up of a footprint for the building.
Yeah.
And with that, you'll run and kinda create a design that will accommodate the need for that clubhouse. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
This council has to decide if this is the route we wanna go. Do we want just to have our club, our golf course build this facility? And I don't wanna tease, Delbert wouldn't be able to do it, but we've got a new pro that's kind of experienced in this area. Do we want a third party building this clubhouse, or does the town wanna take, because we are putting the half a million bucks into it, and leave it up to our golf course currently to build this clubhouse, or do we want Delbert to build the clubhouse? We've gotta make that decision before we talk about MOUs and everything else.
Well, all that has to be dealt with. This is why I say, the first step is for Jeff and Delbert to kinda iron that out and see if it, all those, all those kind of issues that you are talking about.
There has to be some direction. I don't want Delbert to drag out for another year and decide, well, we're not gonna use you anymore, Delbert.
Right. And so, all that has to be...
If council, if council came and said, we've decided we're gonna build it ourselves, then I would...
This is what has to be decided.
I would say, that's fine. But have some input from the golf community on what needs to be there.
100%.
Right. And I really, I agree with all that. And this is why maybe we were slow at moving on that, is because we have not explored all the possibility. Because six months ago, we did not know we were going to put $500,000 in, in that.
We didn't know COVID was gonna strike us either.
And we did not that COVID will kinda throw wrench at us all. So, appreciate your frustration, but kinda look at a little bit at alls, yes.
Okay. So, can, can we get administration and, and Delbert together and get this MOU ready for us for the next council meeting?
Okay, so, counselor, we're going to this...
Putting us off. I think we need to get it done.
Counselor, Counselor Court just expressed some, some concerns about the whole thing. So, let's talk about that when we get to it.
7H.
And then we will, we will hash it all out. And if a decision needs to be made now, we will. Okay?
Yeah.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just don't want it to go any longer either.
All right. So, thank you so much for taking the time to help us with the ideas, the concept. Now you have a sense of the whole of those two projects, what we can financially afford, and hoping that you can fundraise on your end.
Yeah.
And get us moving towards something, because the town alone cannot do it.
Yeah.
It's that simple.
Okay.
Okay?
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Delbert.
Thank you all for coming. Much appreciated.
Can we make a motion for a five-minute break before our next allocation?
Yeah, please, go ahead. Thank you.
No, we need more than that.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you so much. All of you for coming.